We have a city council workshop for July 26, 2021. And we have just two workshops. We need to excuse. I don't actually have a roll call. We still do roll. It's not on my agenda for tonight. So I was like, why don't I have that? But Kristin, you want to do a roll call?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Mr. Pfeifer?
I move to excuse Councilmember Simpson from tonight's workshop.
All votes are cast. Just Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
All other votes are cast. That passed six to zero. Ms. Simpson excused. I'm sorry, Kristin. Indeed, the agenda does have the roll call. I just missed it. Okay, we have two workshops. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to present to you a proposed ordinance and rules and regulations related to micro mobility, that's e-scooters and e-bikes. And we'll start with Mobility and Planning Innovations Manager, John Ferruzzi.
Evening.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Good to be here tonight. I'm here to provide some information related to our shared micro-mobility pilot program. This is something that we have brought to you in the past, and now we're nearing an ordinance for proposal. Myself, the manager of the Mobility and Planning Innovations Division, as well as Emily Grog, former City Attorney's Office, will be presenting some information about shared micro-mobility. Next slide. All right, so to get started, just to let you know what we're going to be talking about tonight is just to set up a quick recap on the progress to date, as well as some information related to the ordinance that we've developed that we'd like to share with you ahead of presenting the actual ordinance to council. In the recap, I wanted to just point out that when we initially started with this program, this started from the Citizens Transmission Advisory Committee coming to City Council with a solution for first and last mile connectivity to G-line stations. At the time, when they were doing their analysis on different options, we looked at a one-mile radius of each G-line station that serves Arvada, which includes the last station on the line, which is technically in Wheat Ridge, but we still considered that as part of the service area and look at the entire corridor, which we're considering our mobility innovation corridor. Next slide. At the time, we also presented some information related to our process to launch and the steps up we would take. This included a proposal for three public engagement events, an online survey for feedback. Then we would basically go through the ordinance process, and from there, if this is something that the city is interested in, we would initiate a process to engage with the operators out there that are interested in micro-mobility. And from there, we would add some improvements to the station areas, such as preferred parking zones and educational attempts and public outreach. And from there, we would go to a launch and offer the programs as a pilot to start collecting data and information about the usage and the performance of micro-mobility in our community in relationship to transit. Next. So this is a timeline that we have developed essentially for the project, which speaks to essentially the steps that we presented. The first step is that planning step, we started that back in March. From there, we went to our public outreach in April, May, and essentially we're going through the ordinance, the City Council process currently. The next step, if this is something that is in the interest of the city, we would proceed to a launch and a process with operators out there to then initiate the project and then a formal launch in the community. So so far, just to kind of give you some information about what we have done is we had originally planned for three public meetings. We made that four, and we provided some information on our speak-up page, including the public information and outreach efforts that we had recorded. We asked for some survey information and got 201 responses from the public about this. Basically, there's a little bit of a mix in terms of responses. We had some folks from outside the project area that participated, which is great. We got their input. And then we got a mixture of responses from within and outside of the project area. Overall, for to kind of capture the folks that are for or against, we basically heard from folks that were for the project saying, expand the project area and expand transportation options. For those that were against, they were mostly concerned about parking on sidewalks, as well as generally folks not following laws, and some of the concerns around management of a program like this. Would you like to?
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about the ordinance revisions that would be required to implement a program like this. So what we submitted in the packet tonight is draft revision of a couple parts of Chapter 54, which is our motor vehicles. First, we would be doing a revision to the model traffic code. Currently, the model traffic code does not allow for e-scooters, electrical-assisted bikes, or EPAMDs, essentially segways, on public streets and right-of-ways. Now, approximately two years ago, the state did change the Colorado revised statutes to allow for those devices so they can be enforced the same way that a bicycle could for traffic laws. So what is a majority of the packet of the ordinance is just getting us aligned with the state. The model traffic code just hasn't taken that leap yet to align with the state statute. So that would be including the same things that the state is already doing with e-scooters, electrical-assist bikes. The last part of the ordinance is the section that would allow for the actual micro-mobility program that would allow the companies to come in. So we're kind of thinking of it two different ways. People who have their own e-scooters, electric bikes, and then the last article really just addressing how we regulate the companies. What we have chosen to present to you is a way of having rules and regulations that are given by to the Public Works Director, and he would be having the authority then to create these rules and regulations. The pilot program is contemplated in the ordinance and in the rules and regulations. The pilot program would provide for staff to really collect the data to determine whether or not it's going to be successful for the city. What we've worked into the ordinance is that there would be two opportunities for City Council to cancel the pilot program. We have that in the ordinance so that companies aren't surprised. There would be one at approximately the six-month mark and once again at the year mark that City Council could determine that this is no longer a good fit for the city and cancel the pilot program. Ideally, we would like to do a year with then, for purposes of just ease of regulating, then extend that pilot to the end of 2022 and start fresh in 2023. At that point, we would open it up to all micro-mobility's companies on a kind of first-come-first-serv permit application process. So we would really just be regulating who's in our right-of-way with a permit. I think of it more similarly like a food truck, that we're really just regulating where they can go, how they can do it with a lot more specific regulations because there's a lot more at issue here. Next slide, please. So these are some of the challenges that, you know, we have identified and the ways that we've tried to mitigate them in our rules and regulations. So obviously, we've all heard the horror stories and seen it in other cities where we see devices just clustered in one area. So the rules and regulations have very specific instructions on companies on how they have to relocate those devices, when they need to do it, how often. It's called rebalancing their devices. We also obviously have heard from the citizens that it's there's a big concern about them being improperly parked, and we don't want to take any chances of violating ADA or having any of our residents who have challenges maneuvering sidewalks to have any further challenges. So again, we have those rules put into place. We do have the ADA requirements that they must follow. We also have ways that city employees can remove devices immediately if it is blocking access on our sidewalks. The limited ability to control where devices are parked, when we're opening them up to the right-of-way, there are things like they can't park on grass, they can't park on, obviously, like flower beds. And this is where one of the ways we can mitigate that is also to create dedicated parking zones that would help control where they're parked. Companies can end programs and remove devices at any time. This is a very new industry still, even though it's been kind of around cities for now two to three years. There's changes all the time. Obviously, that would be the communication and planning with the local company representatives. Like the next challenge says, this is rapidly changing. From the first time this was kind of brought to my attention, we were just thinking about dockless bikes, and it changed overnight with these e-scooters. So a lot of changes happen, and this is why we are trying to create a permit structure that could be used in the future for other devices if they were to come. The law is a little slow when it comes to new technology, and so we want to try to keep it broad so that we have the ability to regulate other devices if those become common and we think it's a good fit for Arvada. And then the need to manage limited safe space between drivers, buses, walking, bicycling. And that's enhance the specific corridors to improve comfort and safety, and a lot of the work that John and his team would do to make it work for the zones that we've identified. Next slide?
Yes, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions on that regarding those categories. In the rules and regulations, it mentions that a device parked for more than seven consecutive days without moving must be moved by the micro-mobility system operator. Is that a common amount of time, the seven days?
I think it's very dependent, and I think that the pilot program, because I think the information we would have would probably be for other cities, and so knowing what exactly it's going to be for Arvada, that's why the pilot program is going to help us, you know, really compile some of that data. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
Yes, so we're basically wanting to make sure that, in terms of how the operators are managing the devices, if in fact, for example, a device is placed at a station, let's say Sheridan Station, and it's not being utilized, the maximum timeframe for that would be seven days. However, what we're really after is if a device is improperly, like parked somewhere, within hours, the operator would have to remove those, and we've got time limits on what that is.
Okay, and then I just have one more question, and that had to do with the riding side-by-side. Is that a, and the reason why I, I'm trying to think of where it is now. The reason why I have a question on that is because we just passed two riders on the road this weekend. It's on page seven, where, you know, I'm wondering if there aren't narrow areas where, you know, because it gives people permission to ride abreast, too, that they would just do it even though the road may not be large enough. And what, again, because we were driving and we just passed two riders on the road, and my husband, who is a bicycle rider and does that, too, said, you know, they're in the way. They're in the way of the road, you know. Cars had to, we had to pull out to get around them. And in my opinion, that shouldn't be, and not everybody uses good judgment in that respect. So I'm wondering if that, you know, does that give them license to do that?
So this is the exact language that the Colorado revised statute uses, but it's not meaning that we can't amend it to something that's more specific to Arvada. And I've been in the same.
I'm thinking about areas, too, where they are very narrow or, and but I don't know, I've never inventoried our streets. So John, obviously, you would know more about our streets than I do in terms of areas where they may be, it may be too narrow for two people to ride abreast.
I think subsection B is trying to address that, that you still can impede the normal and reasonable movement of traffic. But I agree, I think that we could look at some language to add to the line about shall not ride more than two abreast except, but then add something about where it's not feasible due to the narrowness of the road or something like that. I think the idea was that subsection B would kind of address that idea, but it's definitely something that we could try to make more specific in subsection A.
Okay, thank you. I did, I just, I had an edit, too. On the, let's see, the fourth page, there's a E is the same as D. It's a repetition.
I'm sorry, in the rules or in the ordinance?
Rules.
Okay. Yes, I see that. Thank you very much. Any other questions, or you want me to move on?
You can move on.
So this is just a quick summary of the different sections of our rules and regulations. So obviously, you see that the responsibilities of the permitting are pretty vast. We have a lot of specifics, but the nice part of doing the rules and regulations this way is because it is such an industry that changes so quickly, we'll be able to change these rules and regulations without necessarily coming back to you. The Director of Public Works will have that authority to make small changes if we find that things aren't working really correctly. But obviously, the big thing is the insurance indemnification, and then the fees and the permits schedule and the application process that would all be managed by John's team. Next slide. So this is our proposed idea of a pilot program. We are looking at just limiting it to, I believe, two companies, two companies for the pilot program. They would have to meet all the regulate, all of our requirements in our regulations to be able to join the program. And then there's pretty vast reporting requirements also as part of our rules and regulations. And then you can see we'll have a report that will be required to be provided to the city manager by January 31. And we had to do a little bit of guessing, hoping that these land on City Council meetings. So if you determine that you do want to cancel a program, we can do that officially at a City Council meeting, first time being February 7, and then again September 19. So those would be two chances to cancel the program if it's not working. But if it is successful, then we would extend it to January 1, 2023. And next slide. I think that is all of our official presentation. So if you have any questions.
Mr. Pfeifer, you're first, then Mr. Marriott, and then Ms. Miller.
Yeah, so I noticed the pilot areas, which is great to do it around the train stations, but you also go in and out of Wheat Ridge. So how are we impacting ordinances for that Wheat Ridge would need to have to make this successful?
Yeah, so what we're doing is essentially identifying the actual streets where we would have limitations. So our one-mile radius is really kind of a broad stroke that includes Wheat Ridge and even unincorporate Jefferson County. However, we're coordinating with them to basically see where they're standing on this particular issue. So far, they've been okay with it, with our communication at the staff level. However, if they, you know, decide that that's not the right approach for their communities, then we would basically turn off the electric ability for these scooters and create a boundary essentially to keep them within the city of Arvada if that's the case.
So in the Ward 1, it wouldn't work?
So at the Ward 1, we have identified some of the streets to the north and northeast where city of Arvada limits are located. But so far, with, you know, interest from Wheat Ridge, we are interested to proceed to the station itself. That's, I think, where it's going to matter the most. However, it kind of depends on what they officially say.
So I worry that we focus on last mile to the train stations, which pre-COVID would probably make a lot of sense. Right now, in the way RTD is, I would not think that that's pre-COVID anymore. I think it's going to change, and they probably have to reimagine themselves. Sorry, I laugh because they have a meeting called reimagine. But I think a lot of people are going to use it for other reasons, like going to the grocery store or going to the local store or go to Walmart or go to, you know, Old Town, but not necessarily the train. So are you, what's your thought around the flexibility than just being focused solely on the train stations?
Since the Transportation Committee initiated this with that first and last mile in mind, and usually, you know, the devices are more successful with its connectivity to transit. As a pilot project, I think it still, you know, serves the community to have access to other destinations within the one-mile area, but the focus still is on that multimodal transportation, which is part of our comprehensive plan and transportation plan. So if it's successful, certainly want to, we want to extend it, you know, to other areas of the city and provide connectivity to other grocery stores, schools, parks, and other parts of the city.
So how are you going to measure that when your primary focus is just to do first and last mile to a train, which this is the only part of the city that has a train, let alone, some of our city doesn't even have a bus stop? So how do you gauge success when your focus of your program is focused on last mile, first mile to the train stations?
You know, for-
Because I think like in Candellas, I'll give you an example, Candellas, or any of the Whisper Creek, Five Parks, some other places that would use micro-mobility to get places because it is a little bit more difficult sometimes. They would use it in a different way, and the success there may be a lot higher than the success right now during the winter, assuming you're going to go to RTD on a scooter. I think, I think we're going to see failures in it. I'm just, I'm trying to help open this up to a broader use case than just specifically to RTD.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think you're spot on that there is potential across the city. In terms of how the metro area is doing in terms of our research so far, it's been really the urban cores that have had a lot of the success in user and ridership levels that makes the business viable. Although we've heard about tourism and other, you know, aspects of it that are also beneficial, the companies that we've talked to so far that have expressed interest and asked about Arvada and where we stand on this have all pretty much, you know, focused on the Old Town area and vicinity. They're focused on the train stations in vicinity. So our information is based on kind of the feedback that we're getting from, from successful programs so far.
Well, I think of it as recreate, too, because I think some people just do it just to go up and down the trails. Not saying that that's all within our ordinance. I'm assuming it would be, but some people like to look at that as just recreate for the day.
Sure.
Even though they're not exercising. And then the parking areas, this is my last question, hopefully. The parking areas, you talk about keeping them in an area, zone, a designated spot, but I almost felt that there was some contradiction to that because parking areas out in the neighborhoods in the last mile is not going to be necessarily a zone. Maybe there needs to be more clarity around your messaging around what needs to be in a box and what needs to be out in the area, because I was kind of lost when you're trying to explain the parking areas.
Yeah, I think for us, it's kind of a wait-and-see a little bit, just to make sure that we understand where the demand is, where the issues are. As users begin to ride and we start to see where the numbers of riders are congregating, our goal is to maybe predict that initially. So like, for example, in Old Town where there's a lot of activity and that kind of thing, kind of identify in the station area locations to keep things organized because it's already kind of hectic. But within the neighborhoods, it's going to be a bit of look at the data and then react and start to identify what makes sense. It may be that there's no need for designated parking areas within the residential neighborhoods, that these are available wherever they're available and dropped off. But for rebalancing especially, we're going to be looking at the data and trying to figure that out. So there's a basically small fee that we're looking to charge the vendors to then help with the striping and signing and some of those designations where they're needed.
I do have one more question. Sorry, Mayor. The big, how do they leave the area, the pilot area? How do they go up to 80th and Wadsworth on their scooter, leave it there? We won't turn them off, or we won't have them be turned off. We'll let them go wherever they need to go.
No, actually, we would-
You are going to stop them.
We would limit them, yeah, at the boundary of our program area. And essentially, what it comes down to is-
Even within the city of Arvada?
Yes. So the one-mile radius that we're looking at is something that we're keeping as a boundary, and if things are successful within that area, then we would extend it out.
Let me, let me, let me kind of clarify this.
Sure.
I lived in Old Town, or let's just say I lived by the Arvada Center, which I think might be within the one-mile radius. And I get on it, and I head up the big hill, come over 72nd, come down, and I come down to the Target, and I shop. The scooter will not work past the one-mile mark. It will stop me there. So I'm going to get pissed off, abandon the program, and say, there's not worth doing scooter. I think we need to rethink that. I agree that you can relaunch or redeploy your scooters back into your pilot area, but I would, if you want to be successful, as soon as you make that scooter stop and they're halfway up the hill, 72nd, or up to 72nd and Wadsworth, you're just going to piss off a citizen in one way or the other, and they're trying to enjoy your pilot, and we've just told them, no, you can't. So I would, I would ask-
To expand it.
Well, allow them to go out, but you might want to redeploy them back into your pilot area, but don't limit where they go within our city limits. If we're going to do this, because that's data you can have to see how the uses of the scooters are. Because I'm going to tell you, I really strongly believe that your thought of going to the rail line is their primary use case, and I think that is not the case, you know. So we really need to really look at how is Arvada using these scooters, not how other cities use the scooters with a rail line. Let's think about it differently, because I'll tell you, one of those scooters are expensive, and I tell you, on the West Side, a lot of people already have them and already use them all over the place, and they buy their own. So if they're spending a thousand, $2,000, $3,000, or like, you know, I know John sells the bikes, $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, people are buying these anyways, and they're using them to recreate and do them for other reasons. So-
Sure.
I think if you want to be successful in your pilot, I would encourage that you don't limit the destination of these. You might want to bring them back into the pilot area, but don't limit their destination.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I just have, as a somewhat frequent rider of these in Denver, it does tell you if you're near a no-zone, like the company, the little dash actually tells you if you're going outside of a zone. For example, you can't ride them anywhere near the ballpark anymore. They do just slow down and stop. So it's not something that the companies haven't dealt with, but that is by no means to say we can't encourage the, looking at this program as a bigger area. But it is nice that the companies have that ability to kind of alert their riders.
No, I get that, but I hate to be alerted going up the hill that I was using the scooter for and get pissed, you know, get pissed about that.
I've had to make a pretty long walk home.
Yeah, because I was, when I commit and I get on it, I commit, and I think I'm going to go to Target on it, and then I'm told, you know, one-third of the way, one-third of the way there that I can't go. That's just frustrating. Even if it warns me, it's still a poor experience.
And I've been warned and kind of ignored the warning until all of a sudden it just didn't go anymore.
Yeah.
I only have that happen when I'm in a golf cart and go off the beaten path with the geofence.
How did you feel about that? See?
That I screwed up and that I need to get back where I'm supposed to be.
Well, you're not supposed to take the golf cart off the golf course, so that's a little bit different. But, you know, the thing is, is it's like running out of gas on a golf cart. I mean, if you run out of electricity and you're on the 17th hole, it's still frustrating that it stopped when you thought you can keep going to the 18th hole. I mean, similar.
As long as I can get to the 19th hole. Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So going back to the public outreach that we did, I think one of your slides said the majority of people were against micro-mobility or even doing a pilot program. Do you know about how, was that 60-40, or was it 90-10? How strong was the sentiments against doing it?
So we had basically comments that were received from the, from the public, and I summarized them as the major comments for and the major comments against. And interestingly, from what I'm remembering right now, it was like 51-49, where 49 were against and 51 was in favor.
Okay, so it was, it was close to evenly split.
It was very close, yes.
Okay, got it. Other question I'd have is, have we talked with operators yet about this pilot program structure and gotten input from the people who might participate on the other side?
Yes, yeah. So they've contacted us here at the city numerous times to ask- Yes, yeah. So they've contacted us here at the city numerous times to ask about what the city of Arvada is allowing, and as a result, you know, what we would be doing to launch a program here. And in those cases, I've, you know, basically mentioned that we are on the path to introduce a program. We've got still some work ahead of us, and they have actually asked me to let them know once we do have approvals.
Right, okay. Another question I would have then is, how would we know kind of what size our effort ought to be? You know, how would we figure out, this is how many devices you can deploy, you know, put a limitation on that?
Yeah, so in our, one of our previous workshops, we talked about four hundred devices total in the pilot project area, just based on our research with other communities and how much activity they've had with these. Now, we are permitting these, you know, and these, the devices and these numbers, but we're also wanting to split them between e-bikes and e-scooters. So there's some flexibility in the numbers of bikes versus scooters. However, with the total, we're capping with two companies, four hundred devices in the pilot area.
Right, okay. And does the program as it's written allow the community development or the Public Works Director the flexibility of turning that up or turning that down if we deploy and go, wow, this is way too many, or wow, this isn't even close to enough? Do they have the flexibility to kind of run that program?
Legal counsel is shaking her head, yes.
Yes, not only does it have the ability to, if, we kind of put it on the operators, if they want to request more, they need to show the data of why they need more. But it's also each year in our, if it was to go past the pilot year, each year, John's team would have to look at how many is appropriate based off of the data from the previous year. So the number would be established at the beginning of each year. And the reason we've looked at doing this permit program and having kind of a first come, first served is to still give some opportunity for the smaller companies if they're able to be, meet all of our rules and regulations that they could still apply. That's been kind of a conversation we've had a lot about how to keep it fair. And so we would want the staff to kind of determine the proper number and then open it up and see who's next on the line to give another company a chance to kind of break into the market if we think there's a need for more devices.
Right, okay. Do we have within this potential pilot program any ability to give an Arvada-based company any kind of preference, or, you know, if we're talking about four hundred devices, can we allow them twenty or something like that, just some kind of preference? So if we've got any hometown companies that are trying to do this, that they get an option, even if they're not one of the big guys?
You know, we don't have really strict parameters for the two companies that we will use for the pilot program. It's really going to be who is ready to go and can show that they meet the rules and regulations. So absolutely, if it's a local company that's ready to go and can show that they can meet all of the needs that we are requiring, then they could be considered for that. I think so far, most of the contacts that John's talking about are from the big companies. So they're the ones that are a little more aggressively wanting to get into Arvada. But that was kind of our discussion on keeping it a permit program so we can keep that open in the future. And then come January one, twenty twenty-three, we can just open it up and see who's able to meet our needs.
I guess I'd be thinking about it maybe a little bit differently. I think a couple of the big companies is probably appropriate, because they would have different offerings, and we're obviously looking for a mix of offerings. But if there is an Arvada-based company, a smaller company, a startup, if there was, you know, of the four hundred potential devices, if the two big companies can split three hundred and sixty of them and a small Arvada company can get, have an option at getting forty and not have to be one of the two that supplies the whole thing. Or if we're talking about four hundred devices, again, if we had a local company that could add on top of that within the confines of the pilot program, so they could potentially be in on the pilot side of it, not have to wait until twenty twenty-three potentially to be able to participate. So I don't know if we can think about any way of making that happen.
So just so that you're aware, the application, the draft application that we prepared with this talks about like the company's ability to be responsive if they have a local representative. And I think, you know, that gives the local companies a leg up in the application process. So in some cases, the larger companies actually have been working to have local representatives, but they're still like metro-wide. It's not specific to, say, one community itself. And so our application process does touch on that to provide that. But we've been keeping it first come, first served, meeting the, you know, reporting requirements, keep an even hand amongst the companies, big or small, in the process.
Yeah, I guess I understand that. I just, it seems to me that if there was a company that was located here, it would have some advantages. But I don't know that there's any company located here that could be fifty percent of our pilot program or big enough to do it, you know? And it would seem like, it's like, almost like a pilot within a pilot, like can we home-grow a company who can provide part of the, you know, just provide an opportunity to potentially home-grow a company that could in the future provide part of this? And I'd hate to see them have to be out until twenty twenty-three, and then by twenty twenty-three have to be at the scale to be able to compete with the people who have been in the pilot program. It just seems like an opportunity for a little bit of economic development, maybe here within the community and potentially business opportunity for somebody who thought that's maybe what they would do. Obviously, we'd be giving them an advantage over other people, which flies in the face of the even-handed thing. But, you know, in economic development, we do that sometimes with our home-based companies. So anyway, just something to think about. I'd love to see something like that as.
Let me speak to that, John. We've had, you know, we've, over the years, we've had local businesses want to get preferential treatment across the board with the city, and I think we've made a pretty diligent effort not to do that in our procurement practices. So I think that's a dangerous path to start going down.
Well, and I agree with you, I guess, from what you explained to it that way. Although this isn't really something the city's procuring, this is more of a permission to operate is maybe a little bit different. But anyway, okay, I understand.
You know, I had you in mind, Councilmember Marriott. When I, because, you know, some cities are doing, Denver has done a contract with the two biggest companies, and that is how, so they did go through the procurement. We chose to keep it regulations and so a permit that you can come in. And the idea is, is that while it may be hard in the pilot program going forward, we don't necessarily approve one of the big companies to increase their numbers unless other companies have had a chance to come in. So we were trying to think of that and trying to be as creative as possible.
Keep it in mind, yeah.
Yeah, so we are thinking that way, and the great thing is, is that we know that we're going to have to make changes as this counts. It's constantly evolving, but I was thinking of you, so I tried to make sure we left that opportunity for some of these smaller companies to break through.
I picture, it seems like a program like this, there's more hands-on than it maybe initially seems. Like, it'd be great if these devices just always moved around and were in use and could easily get where people want. But I think the reality is that companies have to move them around significantly so that they're in the places people want them and go out and gather them back up and bring them back to the places people want them all the time. And having somebody who's here, you know, a small business that's in Arvada is advantageous. I don't know that we have that, but anyway, just a thought. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. So when I was the chamber president, I used to advocate that we did give preferential treatment to Arvada businesses. I used to sit out there every day looking at the purchase sheet going, we had a company in Arvada that could have done that. So anyway, first, thank you so much for all of the work that you have done on micro mobility. It is fantastic. I wish that we had scooters and bikes that people could use all around the city, the residents, the visitors to our great city, to go to the Arvada Center and West Arvada Majestic View Nature Center. My concern still is, and I know I've said this before, John, I just feel like I'm a broken record. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My concern is devices that are left in the sidewalks, you know. And I was just at the Ale House on Thursday afternoon, beautiful Thursday afternoon, parked up the street, walking down that big old hill, and there's two scooters right in the sidewalk. And I'm in my five-inch heels, and there's pebbles on either side of the sidewalks. I'm like, I had to walk over them, like I had to get over both of them, because they were right in the middle of the sidewalk. And, you know, I've told this story before, but my brother-in-law biking, comes around the corner, hits an e-bike on the trail, or a scooter that was left on the trail and breaks his face on the concrete. Had to have surgery on his face. So they get left. And I know that there's a number of hours where people can move them. But even during the week, it's four hours, but still, that's all afternoon it could be there. But then it's up to twelve hours, you know, on the weekends and after six o'clock. So essentially, a scooter could sit in a sidewalk all day Saturday or all day Sunday. And that gives me a little bit of heartburn and stress, but everything else is awesome.
Thank you for that. Just to let you know, what we're planning to do is, as part of our monitoring with this, it's advantageous for the companies to have use of the scooters rather than to have them sit. So typically, data is one of the most important components of what they're doing in terms of operating their business. And we've requested access to that same data, so we can begin to refine how the assets are moving around, how much utilization they're getting, and not to have them set essentially for a long period of time. The four-hour window that we have identified is based on recommendations from research from other cities in terms of, you know, having a more, lesser time for reactions. I think we can certainly try to figure that out and see if that's a possibility so that they move quickly. It's, again, in the best interest of the company that they get utilized and they don't sit. And that's basically our goal as well.
Just a quick follow-up question to that. If something is sitting there all day, would our team move them off of the sidewalk?
Yeah, so basically, if the company does not respond within the timeframe that they're supposed to.
I mean, within like fifteen minutes?
We would.
If we saw it, we could just move it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
I do have a couple of questions, thank you. So from an ordinance perspective, will the ordinance open up the ability for people who have, and I think you said this, but I just want to double-check, for people who have their own personal vehicles or personal devices to use those on sidewalks and trails outside of the test area?
Yes, absolutely. We'll treat them the same as bicycles. We still have the ability to regulate areas of town or trails or parks with signs, but it would be also giving our police department a way to enforce traffic laws on people on e-scooters and electrical assist bikes. So yes, the idea is that personal-owned ones would be able to be used.
Okay, thank you. And then some of my other questions were answered through the conversation, but just, I was thinking, just recently, in a city that had e-scooters and they had parking spots or parking, there were, basically, it was a box, and it was painted on the ground. And while you saw some of them in those boxes, I'm curious what your thoughts are around training or teaching the population on proper compliance? And how do we, how do we get people to actually put them back in the box?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. The private sector has a number of marketing tools that they use, either on their apps, where a user, once they're done with their trip, they have to take a picture to confirm that it's properly parked. And say, for example, it's near a bike box or a scooter box. In some cases, for bird, they call them bird cages. So essentially, what they do is they try to use their map and their app to essentially teach people where to drop things off, and they'll incentivize it. So if you park it here, you might get a discount on your next trip. And that's the kind of thing that we're going to be working towards.
It makes a lot of sense. I appreciate you sharing that. Because I honestly didn't know how, you know, because again, you see people that are, and people are going to be non-compliant, and I guess that's why you have, you know, those trucks wandering the cities, picking up bikes or e-scooters or bringing them back to their proper spot. So I think that's a great way to help mitigate some of that. So thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for your presentation. We'll look forward to seeing how the pilot works and then either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down at the end of the pilot program.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Devin?
Yes, Mr. Attorney General of the Council, this is the John Ferruzzi night. At the, for the workshop, John will lead us off with the traffic calming projects update.
Very good. Mr. Ferruzzi?
All right, so I wanted to be sure to circle back to City Council on the traffic calming pilot projects. We basically provided some information to you some, a number of months ago about West Fifty-seventh Avenue, and we got some feedback in the process about expanding the traffic calming pilot projects to Grandview as well. So tonight, we'll be touching on that and giving you an update. Next slide. So some of the things that we're going to work towards tonight is some information about a recap on the strategy that was presented, as well as some information that we presented almost about a year ago on West Fifty-seventh Avenue, and then what we've done since with the Grandview Avenue Pilot Project after we presented that information to City Council, and then the feedback that we received and what we're proposing as a result of this for the pilot project. Next. So back in twenty nineteen, and also in twenty twenty, we started with what we're calling a lighter, quicker, cheaper LQC strategy. This strategy is basically the use of signs, paint, markings, flex posts, things that we can use pretty quickly and cheaply to respond to specific concerns that the public has about, say, crosswalks where they are not respected getting across the street, or in some cases, speeding, which is kind of a common complaint in neighborhoods, and what can the city do to ensure safety. So we deployed a few of these pilot projects. In the picture you'll see, for example, that's Brooks at Fifty-ninth, where we set up a traffic circle that is painted with flex posts in the middle. This was after we modeled it on our AutoCAD system to show essentially how fire trucks and trucks would get through. We, after we deployed this, we videotaped it a number of times to understand how motorists are compliant with this, and it showed a higher rate of compliance, about ninety percent. And essentially, we tried a couple of things in individual locations that now we're trying to say, okay, because of their success, can we turn this into a series along a corridor and see what that looks like?
Ms. Miller?
Can I just ask a funny question? Sorry. I'm tired, and that's why I'm a little cheeky today. So people that are not compliant, what does that even look like? Like, do they not go around the circle the right way, or do they go through the circle? I mean, how do you be non-compliant around that circle?
We were counting the number of folks who were essentially cutting and instead of going around it, just kind of cutting through. Now, we expected that with, say, for example, large trucks, because like a fire truck, for example, is, it's designed to be able to accommodate that with their sirens and lights on. But your average, you know, car or truck shouldn't be doing that. And so that's one of the things we were looking for. So yes, we were interested in seeing if we could increase the safety and comfort of pedestrians and cyclists along a corridor, if we could work on a series of these to essentially prepare for a traffic calming program. Next slide. All right, yes. So our strategy was to start with one corridor initially and deploy a number of these along the corridor. And with the increase of traffic on Fifty-seventh Avenue over the years and its connectivity to Van Bieber Creek Trail on the west end and Old Town on the east end, we started with West Fifty-seventh Avenue, where it also jogs a little bit and connects to Van Bieber Creek Trail off of Grandview. And so this is the information that we presented last time too, with some information on the process that we went through. Next slide. At the time, we presented information about the options for what we're calling tools in our toolbox, a traffic calming toolbox that we're developing. And we did some education and provided some information to the public as we went through our Zoom meetings and provided some of this information through the pandemic period, of course, to then talk about which are the, what are the options, what are their benefits, and then how to use them, because they're not all appropriate in all locations. Next slide. What that amounted to, you can see here, is essentially a number of recommendations that were more bike-focused, based on the preferences from the public. We had a pedestrian-focused alternative to this as well, but the bike focus is what moved forward for West Fifty-seventh Avenue and also for that seg- Avenue and also for that segment of Grandview between Independence and Garrison. Next slide. To give you a snippet of what that translates into in a graphic form, you're basically looking at 57th Avenue with Balsam Street where the traffic circle is shown on the east end of the corridor and in front of Arvada K8 and Wolf Park, the potential for raised crosswalks. This is in addition to, for example, buffered bike spaces or bike lanes, and this is where parking spaces were discussed during the public outreach effort to say, "These are the trade-offs. How do you feel about this?" And folks were weighing in on these alternatives. It's worth noting that 57th Avenue at this location tends to change character a little bit. So east of Balsam is a little bit narrower and different than, say, west of Balsam. So a lot of discussion was happening kind of right around the school and this particular location, which is why we detailed it out a little bit more. Next. So at the time, we conducted a survey, and this is just to recap kind of what that looked like. We had folks during the meetings, which we had four of, provide survey responses as well as on SpeakUp, we used our survey tool. And generally, from the sampling here, you can see that we had support for traffic calming options that we had presented. And in some cases, there were some questions in the back of people's minds about traffic calming, but they were generally supportive of what we were doing. Only a small group was not very supportive of the project. Next. So from there, we presented options and asked folks to weigh in on the options. In this particular case, we talked about the bicycle option, and it had support. Next slide. And we also talked about the intersections and tried to get some feedback related to which intersections are the highest priority as part of that process. And interestingly, you can see here, 57th and Yukon came up, as well as 57th and Yarrow and 57th and Balsam. So a few different intersections in the area along 57th Avenue. Next. All right. So that was information related to 57th Avenue that we had presented previously. And at the time, the feedback was, okay, this is great, but you're going to push a lot of the issues onto Grandview Avenue. We've got some questions about that. How do you pair the two together? How do you look at them together? So that's essentially what we did. We created a project where we went back out to the public, this time for Grandview Avenue. We invited them to several public meetings. And in this case, the character of, or the context of the roadway is very residential compared to kind of a mixed character on 57th Avenue with schools, with the school and also park and food bank. So a little bit different in terms of character, and we wanted to make sure to give it its due diligence and attention as part of the process. Next slide. So as part of our efforts, we did some traffic data collection and analysis. Seven locations, as you can see here, were analyzed. Next slide. And what's interesting about the analysis and the information that we got back was that compared to 57th Avenue, where folks were more focused on the school and Old Town section, the speeding and the issues were more prominent on the Independence and Van Buber Creek side of Grandview Avenue. Not that the entire corridor was not an issue from the public perspective, but our data showed that some of the, the majority of the issues that we're seeing with regard to speeding was happening pretty much west of Balsam Street. Next slide. As part of the process, we also looked at crashes throughout the corridor. And what you're seeing here is that there's kind of an even spread of crashes. There's no particular pattern that emerges. We have essentially looked at the crashes to see if any of them are correctable, if there's any kind of pattern, but really not something that is a pattern that we could, you know, put our finger on and say, "This is what emerged definitively." They were just kind of spread out. Next slide. Okay, so for Grandview Avenue, here is kind of the same kind of survey questions that we asked and a summary of what that looks like. We asked the question, "Is speeding an issue on Grandview?" And we got a response back that, for the majority of folks, yes, speeding does seem to be an issue. Next slide. We also asked if, based on the presentation that we provided, do you have a preference for speed humps or speed cushions? This is actually something that we get requests around quite a lot. Can you install a speed hump on my street? Can you place speed cushions? And we wanted to basically ask if there was a preference. And interestingly, what we got back was support for speed cushions seemed to be higher in the two categories, the speed humps and speed cushions. But then there was also support for other options. And in the comments, what we noticed was that there was a desire from the community to have wider sidewalks. And we said, "We'll acknowledge that. That's definitely something that we'll look into, but that's kind of separate from this particular project to calm traffic on the street." So that was part of the comments that we're sifting through to get to that conclusion. Next slide.
John?
Yes.
Going back to the question on speeding, do you think that if we asked every resident in Arvada if they felt that their road, you know, there was speeding on their road, that you'd probably get a high percentage saying yes?
You know, absolutely, yes. So I think, you know, folks have perceptions about what that speeding looks like. In this case, that's why we did the speed study, just to make sure that we gauge the experience that folks are having with the data on, you know, close to 40 miles an hour along the roadway. And, you know, the tolerance levels also vary. Some people are all right with the speeds in the street, but in some cases, the tolerance levels are real low. And that's absolutely true. Folks will be very vocal about that kind of thing. So similarly, along Grandview Avenue, we also asked about the intersections, and we asked which intersections should we identify as locations where speed cushions would be placed if that's the direction that we're going. And as you can see here, that Grandview Balsam, Grandview Dover, Grandview Everett, and Grandview Garrison kind of spread out throughout the corridor is the response that we got back from the community. So it was kind of an interesting result compared to 57th Avenue, where there was kind of a concentration towards the east end. This was throughout the corridor. Next slide. All right. So to show you what this looks like with 57th Avenue and Grandview together in terms of traffic calming devices, basically, based on the feedback that we got and the data that we looked at, on 57th Avenue, we have traffic circles that are towards the Old Town section of the corridor with a couple of speed cushions closer to the stop-controlled intersection at Field and 57th. And a similar pattern is identified for essentially Grandview Avenue, where around the stop-controlled intersection of Carr and Grandview, we would have speed cushions, and we're spacing them out along that particular corridor to ensure that folks are slowing down in between these locations. Now, one of the things that this map does not show, which I should mention, is that for Grandview Avenue between Garrison and Independence, as part of the 57th Avenue project, we did plan to widen the sidewalk. There are a number of homes that don't front the street, and the parking is excess space. So that's the area that we've been working on as part of the original project to widen sidewalk. That will help with the trail connectivity and extension into the neighborhood. With that, I think that's my last slide, and I'll open it up. Oh, I should mention also that we do have some funding programmed in place in case this is something that has, when we get positive feedback, we could move forward with. We'd want to test with modular devices that can be removed if it's something that's not successful. So if we get feedback from the public and we see the data that shows that these are not successful or not at the right locations, we're willing to remove them from their location, move them to another location, test it, or remove it altogether if they're not working. However, if they are successful, our proposal is to keep these modular devices, the speed cushions, for example, come in plastic, hard plastic sections that can be mounted on the street, and essentially keep it there until the next reconstruction project. At that time, we'll design permanent, essentially, speed cushions for that roadway, given that their success is proven. So that's our approach currently with the initiation of this project as a pilot project. And then for a period of time, we would evaluate it, report back to City Council, and essentially try to determine if they're successful or not successful using that data.
Mr. Fiver.
What happened to the chicanes?
We...
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I think it's not a problem, as long as the chicane doesn't go to, like, the other side of the road. I mean, but anyways, I'm sorry, I had a poke. It's always funny to...
I'm thinking we should have tried the temporary ones first.
Well, that, well, lesson learned. That's what they're doing.
Right, right.
You answered one of my questions about, you know, when does a permanent one go in? So you got all that done. You've mentioned the widening the sidewalks. I had that as a question, but where did you talk about you had it programmed and did widen the sidewalks? Was that on Grandview heading towards Independence?
Yes, so...
So you're programming that in?
Yes, so Grandview Avenue, basically, at Independence feeds into Van Buber Creek Trail.
Right.
And we would extend the trail eastward towards Garrison Street.
Okay. So you'll narrow the street anyway, so narrowing the street sometimes psychologically slows people down, so that will help a little bit. And you're still planning to do those temporary in there. Is that going to happen at the same time or roughly the same time-ish?
Yeah, the idea is to deploy them if they're available sooner with the speed management devices, because the construction project may take a little longer. However, we are talking about using existing right-of-ways, so it shouldn't be that much longer.
Okay. And the cushions, I think Golden deployed some that were, some city around here has done it. It's kind of, it messes with you a little bit because there are openings where you can drive. Your car doesn't quite fit the width, but it's interesting. The only question I have is, how is our plow operations going to handle those situations? Because I think those are plow routes.
Yeah. So what we would do is essentially put markers on either side of the device, and they would lift the plow as they go over it. And if they, for example, forget for some reason, or it's nighttime, they don't see, if it gets knocked out, we'll put it right back in. These are modular devices that are very easy to...
But they're not going to leave, like, the big nails or whatever they're pounded into the ground and a mess the next morning? You have some...
Yeah, likely, I mean, it'll look missing from that location. Usually, there's an adhesive that goes in with the anchors.
Okay.
So we're looking at, starting with an adhesive first with no anchors to begin with, and then if that's successful, then we would basically put the anchors and adhesive together.
Okay.
We have been in communication with our Streets Division about the location of these, so it's not a surprise.
Yeah, definitely. I was just worried that they'd just get ripped out every time, and then it's more of a hassle.
Sure.
Actually, all the other questions, you answered, so thank you.
Great. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah. John, I have a question about, when we saw this the first time, particularly with regard to 57th Avenue, you know, one of the plans was to lower the speed limit from 30 to 25. Is that still part of this traffic calming thing? And at the time when we talked about that, we talked about if you install some of this traffic calming on 57th and lower the speed limit, you'll shift a bunch of traffic to Grandview where the speed limit is 30, not 25. Is that also part of this plan to lower the speed limit on Grandview to 25 as well?
A section of Grandview is 25.
Yeah, east of Carr Street it is, but west of Carr, it's 30.
You know, so we essentially talked about lowering the speed limit on 57th because it gets so wide, essentially, for the sections to the west of the corridor in conjunction with the devices. Grandview Avenue doesn't have that wide section, so we were going to keep the speed limit the same. However, it is an option to lower it. We have considered that for a number of collectors as part of our projects.
Right. I know in your, in these slides here, you've got the data collection analysis that's on speeds at different places in the corridor. Have you been able to compare those, the Grandview ones versus the 57th ones, and see, you know, the current condition, if there's much difference between them?
In terms of speeding, yes. So what we're seeing on 57th Avenue is, I'll say, consistent speeding throughout the corridor. What we're seeing on Grandview Avenue is speeding towards the west end of the corridor. So it's a little bit different, and I believe it has to do, this is speculation, the roadway narrowing and the number of driveways that are on Grandview Avenue. As you essentially look at 57th Avenue, there are a lesser number of homes fronting the street.
Right. But was the comparison, was there quite a difference in the current condition of the speed that's traveled on the two roads? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is that with these two parallel roads, being careful not to build an incentive to just shift traffic from one to the other, either way, whether it's to shift it off of Grandview to 57th or 57th to Grandview, either way, and it would seem like consistency there ought to be pretty important so that there's not that shifting.
Yeah, you know, I think what we're looking at essentially is examining the success of these devices and moving them around or trying to figure out how to target the speeding issue differently between Grandview and 57th. So for example, the traffic circles that we have there towards Old Town, the volume of traffic on 57th is about 4,000 average daily trips. The volume of traffic on Grandview is closer to 2,000, so half of that. So we are kind of looking at those nuances to see traffic circle versus speed cushion, which is more appropriate, and then we'll adjust as we go if, you know, we see that there is a change in one or the other. The idea being that we still want 57th Avenue to function the way it functions and Grandview to function the way it functions and just meet more of the expectation of the residents.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
Actually, my question was answered, and I was going to ask to be reminded what a speed cushion looks like, but I remembered that I had Google at my disposal, so I just Googled it. It's my memory, so I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Thank you, John.
All right.
We'll look forward. And I think doing these temporary, you know, experimental ways to do it is the right way to go forward, based upon learning experience off of 52nd Avenue. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Devon, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, I don't. I would like to say one thing, and this is appreciation of the work that John and his team is doing. Speed complaints are probably the number-one complaint we get across neighborhoods, across the entire city. So by doing these kinds of programs, pilot programs, and trying to implement these kinds of measures, we may become, we may come up with a blueprint for how we want to deal with these kinds of issues in other neighborhoods in the city. So really appreciate the work that John and his team is doing. And I do not have any other comments for the City Council tonight.
Very good. Thank you all. Everybody have a good evening.